Six out of our 10 board members who are expected to be here this evening or late afternoon. So we'll go ahead and get this started. This first work session is on School Readiness Resources Panel Presentation. And so I will turn this over to Dr. Francisco Duran, who will do the introductions.
Yes, good afternoon. With me here is Anne Marie Tuie, who is from the Fairfax County Office for Children. And we'll be presenting to you today the School Readiness Resource Panel Presentation that we have put together and has been presented to the Board of Supervisors last month, has been presented to Skip and endorsed by the Skip. And today, we'd like to share with the school board what the recommendations are. So to start out for our presentation this afternoon, Anne Marie is going to walk us through the first part, and then I will conclude with the panel recommendations.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here this afternoon to present alongside Dr. Duran. The School Readiness Resources Panel was convened at the request of the Board of Supervisors earlier this summer. And they were asked to please identify some innovative and bold expansion goals and long-term funding strategies for expanding the county's early childhood system. And we're also asked to put those together in a really quick timeframe. They met throughout the summer and then were able to present, as Dr. Duran said, in September to the Board of Supervisors and Skip team. And now, we're presenting that information to you all in advance of the county's budget cycle. The panel was comprised of a diverse group of stakeholders with a variety of areas of expertise and experiences. And you'll see from the list that included parents and educators, members of the faith communities, nonprofits, higher education, the philanthropic community, the business community, the county's Child Care Advisory Council, as well as both Carla Bruce, the county's Chief Equity Officer, and Dr. Duran from the schools. Today's presentation provides an overview of the information reviewed and considered by the School Readiness Resources Panel, as well as the recommendations. I was able to serve as staff on the panel and will take the first part of the presentation, which goes over that data and information that was reviewed. The work of the School Readiness Resources Panel is grounded in the county's One Fairfax Equity Policy, as well as the county's Equitable School Readiness Strategic Plan. As you're hopefully aware, the Equitable School Readiness Strategic Plan, which was developed in partnership with the schools, community, and county stakeholders, it lays out a vision and roadmap for ensuring that all children in the county arrive at kindergarten well-prepared to reach their fullest potential. The five strategies of the plan focus on partnering with families first and foremost, on providing access to high-quality early childhood programs, supporting the early childhood workforce, using data to inform our work, and building public will and community support for this important endeavor. The panel worked from some key guiding principles. They approached their work with these as foundational premises. First of all, that families know their children best and need to have options to choose supports and services that best meet their unique needs. That programs that support children's school readiness need to begin at birth and go on through eight and beyond, and certainly even begin prenatally. Equity is a foundational premise, that all families have equity of opportunity and outcomes. A focus on the early childhood workforce, recognizing that they are a key to ensuring that we have high-quality early childhood experiences for young children. And also looking at this mixed delivery system that we have in the county, which recognizes that our system is strengthened when families have access to programs in both the public and private sector, and that the system is funded with both public and private dollars as well. And certainly, that quality is an overarching theme and principle for all the services that are provided. And this next slide just provides a graphic of sort of the mission of the Equitable School Readiness Strategic Plan and what our early childhood system looks like, recognizing that the overall components of the system include having the capacity to serve families and meet their needs, to do so in a system that has high-quality offerings and supports and services. And as I mentioned earlier, that's certainly predicated on the early childhood workforce, and that families have access to affordable programs. So these four components work concurrently to create an equitable early childhood system. But one of the first things that the Resource Panel members did was to review some recent fiscal mapping that was conducted over the summer. And we took a look at services for children ages birth up to five in both county and schools programs, and we looked at the past fiscal years. And then we mapped that information by key components of an integrated early childhood system. And at the bottom of this slide, you'll see the agencies from which that information was gathered. So the next slide just breaks down the funding for those past three years by federal, state, and local investments. And you'll see that the local investments are the majority for each of those years, followed by federal and state. And then the next slide, we did our best work in breaking down the funding by key components of an integrated early childhood system. Hopefully, they're pretty self-explanatory, but under community, you'll see things such as the county's consolidated community funding pool, opportunity neighborhoods, home visiting, very straightforward as well, Nurse Family Partnership, Healthy Families Fairfax, health and nutrition programs, child welfare. And the last column that you'll see, which we've highlighted, early childhood services, is the area in which the School Readiness Resources Panel focused. And that component of the system includes our childcare subsidy program, early childhood services provided in the pre-K classrooms at the public schools, as well as in community programs, including Early Head Start, Head Start, and the Virginia Preschool Initiative. The panel also took a look at some income and age data that we have from ESRI data. And hopefully, this slide doesn't make us all scratch our chin like that little guy up there. But essentially, all this lays out is the demographic data of children under the age of five in Fairfax County. So you'll see on that first bar, all children birthed through age four. In the county, there's just a little bit below 66,000 children in that age range. And then if you look at the next cells of that chart, there are a little over 22,000 children birthed to age five, living in families with household incomes below 300% of the federal poverty level. So the subsequent cells include that number of 22,360 in the 300%. If you want to take the next cut down and look only at those children in households with incomes at 200, below 200% of the federal poverty level, then it's 15,764 children. And then the final line is the number of children living in households at the federal poverty level. And then if you read across the chart, it breaks down the numbers of children by their age specifically. And we've put a photo of that sweet toddler crawling, just to highlight the importance of focusing on the earliest years of a child's life. And we did that because the research, as you know better than anyone, really supports focusing on birth onward. We know that the effects of income and racial disparities appear very early, and that they're critical. For example, within the first six years of two children's lives with families with higher or lower incomes, there are disparities such as a six-month gap in the skills critical for language processing. So we just wanted to highlight that. And that is in no way related to a family's desire to support their children and do the very best for them, or their intelligence, or skills, or education. It's really related, as this says, to their access to supports and services. So that's really what we'll be talking about, is access. So the next slide takes a look at, you know, what it means to be living in a household with income below 300% of the federal poverty level, or at the federal poverty level. So you have the income by family size. And it really shows us that if you're living in the county at 300% of the federal poverty level, and you need to rent a two-bedroom apartment, that could be $20,000 of your $62,000 income. If you have one or two children, your childcare expenses would be well over $20,000, which doesn't really leave much. And looking at the childcare expenses, you know, even if someone has part-time or full-time, often the cost of care is more than fees and tuition at a public university or college in the Commonwealth, which is around $13,400. So we wanted to highlight that, and the School Readiness Resource Panel spent quite a bit of time discussing these challenges related to the cost of living, and really recognize that having access and being able to afford quality early childhood services is a game changer for families. It can make all the difference in the world. And it's really a two-generational approach, so that we can ensure that families are able to work and maintain employment and achieve their goals while knowing their children are cared for in a safe educational environment. And the next slide, so we're sort of, hopefully, it's making sense, taking a look at, who are we talking about? All these wonderful young children in Fairfax County? And what types of income households are they living in? And how are we serving them? So this slide takes a look at the number of children that we're currently serving with public dollars. So it also goes back to the fiscal mapping chart, that last column about early childhood services. And what this shows on the first line is that in our programs, Early Head Start, Head Start, and the public schools' pre-K, we're serving in the county, Fairfax County Public Schools, and with the nonprofit partner, Higher Horizons, 2793. So close to 3,000 children are served in these publicly funded slots. The next column takes a look at the Child Care Assistance and Referral Program, which is the county's childcare subsidy program, and it's funded with a combination of federal, state, and local dollars. And that's not a funded slot program, per se, because it's dependent upon the families who come, the ages of their children, and their own income. But over time, we serve approximately 2,000 children, birth to five, in that program. So when we put those two together, we're able to say that we are serving 4,787 children with public funds in early childhood programs. And then the next slide hopefully pulls it all together in a visual for us. And really, what those previous slides show is that we have 1 in 3 children birthed through age four, living in the county, in households with incomes just below, or quite a bit below, 300% of the federal poverty level. So 1 in 3 young children. And out of those children, we are serving 21% of them in those programs that we just discussed. They're either participating in the childcare subsidy program, attending Fairfax County Public Schools' pre-K, or in an early Head Start program in the community, et cetera. If we want to go a little bit deeper and look at the next tier of income, we have 1 in 4 young children birthed through age four, living in households with incomes below 200% of the federal poverty level. And then if we take a look again at what percentage of those young children are we serving with public funds in early childhood programs, it's 28%. So after digesting all of that information, having a lot of conversations, the panel came up with a recommendation and goal for the board and the Fairfax County Public Schools' Board to take a look at and consider. And they're recommending that all families with children birthed to five in Fairfax County who are living in households with incomes below 300% of the federal poverty level have access to publicly funded early childhood programs in both the public and private sectors, meaning in Fairfax County Public Schools' classrooms, in community childcare programs, center-based, and family childcare. So as we digest that overarching goal that the panel has identified, we sort of unpack it a little bit in the next slide. And you'll see on the left side, that first circle, we have 22,360 children under the age of five in households below 300% of the federal poverty level. We're serving about 21% of them currently. So they're the ones that are in the subsidy program or in a pre-K slot at the schools or community. And because the numbers are so large, that the panel suggested a phased-in approach, at first targeting and serving those children in households at below 200% of the federal poverty level. So that would be about 51% of that circle for Phase 1. And then Phase 2 would be the remaining children between 200 and 300, and that's about 28%. So if we move to the right and we pull out those children in households below 200% of the federal poverty level, we have 11,310 young people. And so if we, the panel of course said, well, how much would it cost to serve all of those children? So what we did is we took that number, which we know is a good piece of data, and then we took another set piece of information, which we know, and that's the current rate up to which we can pay for a preschool-aged child in the childcare subsidy program who's attending a full-day, full-year, center-based program. And that amount is $18,200. So we did the math and came up with, you know, a rough estimate of a little over $200 million to serve all of those children in Phase 1. So as I talked through that, you're probably thinking, there are some caveats to that methodology, and there definitely are. It clearly assumes that all of those children and their families would choose to participate or need services, and we know that that's not going to be the case. But at the present time, until we're able to expand a little bit more in our early childhood system, we don't have a percentage of uptake. So once we do serve more children, we'll have a sense of how many families are electing to participate, and then we'll be able to use that percentage in our planning and projections. But this is what the School Readiness Resources Panel identified as the key goal, to make sure that all young children at these income levels and ages have access to the supports and services that their families need, to ensure that they arrive at public school kindergarten programs, just ready to take the world on, and to be curious, and to take full advantage of the wonderful opportunities that we have in our school system.
I would like now to provide you an overview of the panel's recommendations. As Anne Marie shared at the beginning, there were 18 members that were on this panel, who broke up into subcommittees and looked at various categories to determine what would be recommendations towards the Board of Supervisors and the school board, around how we can really approach and implement this comprehensive, advanced approach to early childhood. And so if we think about that into six different categories, I'd like to share with you a little highlight of each of those. So first category, there were four recommendations as it relates to legislative and state actions. The first one is around state childcare subsidy program, that there is advocacy for additional state funding, and that the eligibility moved from 250% to 300%, as you saw, related to the goal. The second recommendation with regards to the Virginia Preschool Initiative is advocacy for increased state resources, more flexibility on how we utilize the VPI, to be able to utilize that fully. And in addition, permitting localities to serve children who are three years old in VPI, because currently, they must be four. The third area for state revenue, the governor has initiated a school readiness committee that is producing a report on how there might be new funding added to statewide dollars, and to more advocacy as it connects to that, to fund additional early childhood programs. The fourth and final recommendation under legislative and state actions would be that the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors convene a community task force to explore possible additional revenue generating mechanisms. And there are a couple that are listed there below, whether it be pursuing legislation to amend the local tax structure, or whether it be enabling legislation to create special taxing district. The panel did not want to get into the specifics of that, but thought an additional task force should be convened to look more closely at that. The second category was on the area of land use and development, and there were four specific recommendations under this area. The first is to develop additional early childhood program facilities in the county's and the FCPS's CIP plans, making sure that there's dedicated space for early childhood programs as we plan around CIP, and looking at various programs that are going to be put in place. The second area under land use is to ensure that all the regulatory requirements and the land use boards are looking at expansion and enhancement of early childhood as a part of their work. The third is to look at ways to convert commercial buildings that are currently vacant, and how they might be used to dedicate space to early childhood facilities. The fourth and final one under land and use development was to align our investments in the childhood opportunity areas where other initiatives are underway, to help create conditions for more early childhood access. And again, all of the panel recommendations are related to access. We do know when we look at early childhood, we need to consider quality, but these are all related specifically to access. The third category is with regards to dedicated early childhood fund. And here, the panel felt strongly that there needed to be a sustainable, dedicated funding stream for early childhood, looking at dedicating one possibility, dedicating early childhood fund with a set aside of the tax revenue, perhaps in the value of one cent from the local revenue, real estate tax. And we looked at a variety of localities across the country, and many of them have done this, they have dedicated a set amount of their tax rates towards early childhood. And so again, these are recommendations that we presented to the Board of Supervisors as they consider their real estate taxes. The next area was with regards to public and private partnerships. There are five recommendations here. One that was really important, and one subcommittee delved deeply into creating business engagement strategies, and how do we work with our philanthropic partners to ensure that they are a part of helping to expand access to early childhood? We saw a lot of successful initiatives around the country, where it was the business community, the business partners, and those philanthropic organizations that helped increase that access. And so in the second area around this, that there was a request at the Board of Supervisors to the Economic Development Authority began to look at community benefit agreements, and how those might include early childhood. Third area was to explore the potential of utilizing Community Reinvestment Act funds to help with, again, access for early childhood. Number four, to explore the possibility of a pay-for-success model, which is something that we saw around the country and other localities, and how that might benefit, again, additional access. Five, to establish the countywide incubator through grant funding and looking at higher partnerships with higher education, the business community, and enhancements to how we might, again, capture some of those dollars. The next recommendation came around community engagement, and we really talked about the need to develop a more intense strategic public awareness campaign, to talk about both the importance of early childhood education, but also the impact that it would have on the county's economic success. We often talk about early childhood on a student's academic success, but really linking that to countywide, looking at our economic success, and ensuring that our business partners and others who may not even have children in early childhood understand how it impacts them as well. And finally, in order to look at all of these recommendations, the panel recommended that the Successful Children and Youth Policy Team be the organization that monitors the progress and the implementation of these recommendations, and provides regular updates to the Board of Supervisors and the school board. And last month, this was presented to the Skip team, and they endorsed all of these recommendations. With that, we conclude the presentation.
Wonderful. I appreciate the wealth of information you packed in there and covered it so quickly, so that the board now has time to discuss the work of the panel, which is really quite impressive. Right now, colleagues, I have Karen Kiesgmar, followed by Dahlia Palchuk, by Karen Corbett Sanders, and then Tammy Darnett-Kofax, and now I see Ms. Strauss. So we'll go ahead and start with you, Ms. Kiesgmar.
Well, thank you. We certainly understand the importance of early childhood education. I've been wondering for some time how we were going to close that gap. And I'm really curious as to how the Board of Supervisors may have responded to these recommendations, since we know that a lot of the funding would have to come from them, and what their expectations are of FCPS. I assume it has to do with us providing the facilities, or at least some of the facilities, and how we would parse that out. I don't know if you dug that deep, or whether it was just an overall discussion. We are currently on a 37-year cycle in terms of dealing with our buildings without these additional things. So certainly, I would be looking to hear how the Board of Supervisors might assist us in addressing not only our maintenance needs, but expansion, to be able to cover this. I'm concerned, not concerned, but looking toward community input toward this, how we might go about doing that. And, I mean, it seems to me that in order to achieve this objective, we really have to start at birth. And I was looking on your list of who participated. I don't recall whether there was someone from Inova or not, or our hospitals and medical communities, but really even how they would assist us in the massive communication that I think would be necessary for the community to have a real buy-in. It's never fun to talk about taxes, but I do recall a discussion we had with the Board of Supervisors, a joint meeting, and there was a concern about attracting young people. They were leaving Fairfax County but not feeling like they had the housing, and so we were talking about engaging in a public relations campaign to draw them back in. And it seems to me that this is part of that, making sure that we're prepared for the future. And, you know, obviously, this is one Fairfax at its best, right? Because we don't have all the answers. FCPS cannot be the complete answer to this. Certainly, we want our teachers and our staff members, and I'm assuming we would be a part of the training of all of that, and making sure people were qualified to do those jobs, and certainly want to. I've been to some of the FESEP locations and seen the wonderful work we're doing. But, you know, I know that FCPS cannot do this alone, so I'm just really looking to see what other people are saying, because this is maximizing the idea of One Fairfax, and I'm curious to see how it's all going to come together.
If I may, thank you for your comments. And definitely, you know, when we talked about a mixed delivery system, this is a countywide issue. Oh, I'm sorry. You know, no one group can do this alone, not the schools, not the county, not the community. It takes all partners coming together, and being thoughtful, and planning intentionally. And to your point, also making sure that we respect and hear the voices of families who know what they need for their children and what their aspirations are. So one of the things we're hoping to do in the coming year is to really, in a very concerted way, reach out to families who we are not currently serving in any of our programs, to make sure that they have the opportunity to share their aspirations for their children, and identify what types of supports and services would best meet their needs. So we'll need to start to make sure we incorporate the family voice, and then, again, always reflecting that this is a community-wide issue, and one that we can solve, but only together. So the Board of Supervisors, we gave this presentation to them, and so they are also thinking through the recommendations. And I certainly can't speak on their behalf, but they had a number of questions, and were pleased that the panel was able to work on that truncated timeline, so that they could bring the data and the recommendations to both the Board of Supervisors and the school board before the budget cycles begin, so that there can be consideration of some of the recommendations. Timing-wise, the legislative pieces, the recommendations were also made in alignment with when the county and the schools are developing their legislative agendas as well.
Okay. We will move on to Ms. Palchuk, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. I also appreciate the presentation. I think those of us here at the table, you know, have been working on this and hoping to have the support from our county and state leaders moving forward. And really, every presentation I've been to about this and how to fund it, A has said, right, every district, most districts are trying to do this work. And on top of that, it's very exciting to see a lot of our chambers and the business community also see. community also seeing that there's such a high return on investment for these programs. So I have a couple of questions for you. The first one being, in DC, first of all, I've seen it's one of kind of like, they're ahead of the game of most other places right now, and they did start with three- to four-year-olds and are now starting to look at birth to two or birth to two, and the three-year-olds they weren't reaching. So I guess my first question would be, I don't believe we've broken it down to that level as well, and so if you see merit and what it would take to see phasing, not just in, you know, the 200% being in phase one, but also do we want to focus on, you know, the three and four-year-olds? Number two, you know, if we have worked, I believe the Virginia Chamber, it's part of their, their, their program for, for Virginia's economy, so if they've had a say or how we, we think we can incorporate them. And then finally, you know, it is, it's always about those funding sources and looking at the variety of ways to do that. So I agree, I think the task force sounds like a great way for us to come together, and I hope that, you know, it doesn't incorporate local, state, public, private, nonprofit partners. And I guess just wanted to get a sense of, on the state side, I know there's been a big push, it sounds like, to look at the university level, and it sounds like we may be seeing a little bit more in pre-K coming forward from the state, which should be helpful. But if you have any recommendations of, of ways to continue to pursue that, because I believe that's also outside of the LCA, LCI funding formula, so also a little bit more helpful for us here in Fairfax County.
Thank you. First off, the panel, I think they were very intentional in identifying the desire to serve children birth to five, so they didn't look at threes and fours only, recognizing, you know, the longer of the duration of the services and intensity, the better. But certainly, that is a strategy that many communities have used, but they put forth the birth to five piece as well. And I think, yes, the Virginia Chamber and their blueprint have definitely identified supporting school readiness as a critical workforce investment issue for the Commonwealth, so I think the timing is good, and we certainly have a window of opportunity to build upon that. And certainly with the Governor's Directive Four around early childhood education, where he asked his Commissioner of Social Services and Superintendent Lane, as well as the Chief School Readiness Officer for the Commonwealth, Jenna Conway, to take a look at this very same issue and identify some recommendations for his consideration as he develops his biennial budget, which will be released this December. And the preliminary recommendations really focus on much of the spirit of this as well, recognizing that no one entity can do this, that a mixed delivery system with public and private programs providing services is critical, taking a look at serving all at-risk or disadvantaged threes and four-year-olds, expanding VPI to possibly pilot it to serve three-year-olds, as Francisco had mentioned as well. So I think we do have a window of opportunity to concentrate our advocacy at supporting some good things that may be coming from the state level, and certainly the careful consideration and thought that you all and the Board of Supervisors are giving to the recommendations.
Thank you. Since I realize I had one more question, 30 seconds. When we're talking about facilities, and I agree, that's, you know, very critical. I know sometimes we say it's better for kids to be in the elementary school they're going to be in so that they get used to it, but that's not always feasible, and we do have some empty or unused school buildings and facilities that could provide additional space. So I don't know if that was considered, because to me, it seems like at least let's get them somewhere if it's not.
Definitely, yeah. And the thought about looking at the commercial revitalization policy, you have great success with Bailey's Upper. The county is also, you know, in concert with you all, looking at the redevelopment of original Mount Vernon High School, which will have an early childhood program there. There are redevelopment projects on the horizons, looking at where the police stations and the Board of Supervisors are located with libraries. There's lots of opportunities. So again, that we're building capacity in both community programs as well as public school programs, and I think that's the way that we'll get at it. What we've been doing with our partner, you know, Maura Burke, who's a wonderful advocate and partner in the school system, making sure that when families come to us looking for services, that we're really focusing on that individual family and their needs. And sometimes, it makes the most sense for a family who has a third and a fourth grader to have a child in a public school classroom. For other families that maybe have a toddler and a baby and live in a certain neighborhood and want to be in a community-based program, we want to make sure that we have a continuum of options for that family. And that's really what the state's approach is going to be and other communities, even, you know, the district is looking at family childcare and partnering and building the capacity of community programs as well. Thank you.
We'll go ahead and move on to Karen Corbett-Sanders, followed by Tammy Darnett-Kofax.
Thank you very much for this presentation. When I saw it released on the Board of Supervisors site, I was very excited that they were doing it, and I'm glad you brought it to us. I have a few questions. One is on your fiscal mapping funding growth. It's fascinating that the state has, over the past two years, increased funding by about $1 million, whereas the local has increased funding by $11,500,000. So it'd be very helpful, and frankly, federal is flat. It would be very helpful to have a breakout of, between the Board of Supervisors and the School Board of that $11 million, and I am not surprised that the Chamber is fully behind this because it's essential to be able to keeping people engaged in the economy is that we have to have childcare. I would like to then go to page 20, 19, and on page 19, you have the 21% of the students that are currently served. If we could have a breakout between how many of those are at the 300% and how many of those are at the 200% of the poverty level, it'd be very helpful. And it would also be helpful to have a timeframe for when, how long you expect phase one to take place. Then on page 21, the state revenue, I'm glad Ms. Kees-Gamar raised it because, or the revenue piece, because the, it seems like we're going to be competing for those pennies this year between the affordable housing and this, as well as our own focus on academics. So I would like to understand a little bit about whether you've looked at that as to a balancing between what's the elastic and how you see perhaps funding support both academics and pre-K, or so K through 12 and pre-K. And would also like to know whether, when you looked at the opportunity zones, or if you looked at the opportunity zones on page 24 and on page 27, are you looking at the federal legislation on opportunity zones, which would have some concentration and a tax-free status for up to 40 years on any investments in this? So if we haven't, then we should look at that. And then finally, when we're looking at, once again, going to the confluence of affordable housing and pre-K, have we looked at putting pre-K into the affordable housing, multi-dwelling units that the county is looking to fund? Because it seems to me that that would be a place we'd look at it. And I apologize, I've run out of time. I have one plea, which is that this came to Skip two months ago. If we can find a way going forward to do a better readout or a more structured readout of what's happening in Skip to this board, it would be very helpful. So that was my list, and I tried to do it quick.
Thank you. We can hopefully get some of those answers to you soon. The child opportunity zones, we really were talking in a less technical term, but looking at those communities in which we are investing, capacity building for the community, and that they're well-positioned to leverage and maximize resources and supports that could go into them. And...
So the federal opportunity zones are supposed to focus on that at a more macro level, and, but because of the fiscal incentives, you might want to take a look at those.
And for Skip, we do have notes that are taken at the end by county staff with all the outcomes of each meeting. We'll make sure, I thought they were coming to the Braybrand briefing, but I'll make sure that they continue to do that. But we do have outcomes from, we just started that Better Notes. Prior to that, we didn't have those Good of Notes, but we do have county staff that are now taking really detailed notes of that, and so we'll make sure to double-check that that happens after each Skip meeting the other month.
We've had the conversation of, the reason the board has administrative support is because we don't have the bandwidth. What we're asking for is just simply have a mechanism in place that if it's coming from staff, send it along to the board. And actually, Eileen is clerk of the board, you can just disseminate it to it. But I don't want it coming through the board members who serve on Skip. Anything else? Okay.
For the remainder, there were several other items. We will get those to you in terms of answers, yeah.
Great. So we, I now have Ms. Darnett-Kofax, followed by Ms. Strauss.
Thank you, Dr. Daron, and to our guest, Anne Marie Tui. I know this has been a area that you've been working on many years, and I thank you for your positivity and patience for our boards to get this done. We have been talking about it since I sat on the council, which has been eight years ago. We know a lot of it is funding. So this panel is music to my ears as it was instituted by the funding body, so that's extremely positive. I think also, you know, we have three minutes, so I'm going to be fast here. Dr. Braybrand, if you can forward to Michael Malloy any issues, make sure the legislative recommendations are there, because we just passed our legislative program on Thursday evening, and so these weren't, because this is just coming today, I think I would like our lobbyists to look at this more carefully and to see. I think I also do want to praise our staff, your partner, Anne Marie, Maura Burke, for working to get 30, over 33 pre-K classrooms opened from our end since 2010, I believe that was. And then we still, that we're only serving 21% of those below 300% of the poverty level, which is still a small, a small number, and, and we know that we have talked about this many times in Fairfax Futures, which I do want to ask you, is that, I know it's still an organization, a viable organization, but I, I know it kind of ebbs and flows as far as, because I know that was one of their passions, early childhood, and anything you can speak upon on that? If you can expand upon, which, where was it? There was, I'll get, I'll get back to that one, because I want to get my other questions in. I do think, you know, the, as Ms. Corbett-Sanders indicated, the dedicated 1% real estate tax, that was something that came out from Skip, particularly when we were looking at one Fairfax, and that's been successful in other areas. But as you said, we always have competing funding. But I think, you know, there has to be a time when we say that this is the year that we get this, because we know for every, you know, dollar we spend in pre-K, we save $5 to $15, or $7 to $15, whatever the ratio is later on. So I think it's extremely important. And I do have a little bit of, I say this was a panel recommendation, but I don't think it's really Skip's job to oversee the progress of this. I think it's the staff on Skip's job, you know, our, our leadership team members, like you, Dr. Daron, I know, Dr. Ivy, you attend there, and then making sure Dr. Braybrand reports back to the board. And while, like Megan said, it's just an administrative kind of thing, so people understand, either there's two Boards of Supervisor and two School Board members, and so when it's either Ms. McLaughlin or myself, or whoever's the Skip representative managing that meeting along with the Board of Supervisors, so it's extremely difficult, I think, sometimes for, as you said, administratively, for us to capture everything and then report back in detail, because Skip has lengthy meetings with lots of information being disseminated. So I know I had one or two questions which you might be able to answer now, so, and I'll ask for a go-back.
First, Michael Malloy did receive this, went after Skip endorsed, and he has that and is looking at it in detail, and I know he's followed up with Maura on some more of the questions and incorporated some of this already into the advocacy that he presented last week.
And we've been working with the county's legislative director as well around those issues. And Fairfax Futures is a local nonprofit with which we're partnering, and they're focused on supporting children's school readiness and has a Board of Directors comprised of primarily business leaders, and they are actually having a business leaders forum this Wednesday, and Dr. Braybrand has graciously agreed to serve on a panel discussion with some other business leaders, Renee Halstrom from the Richmond Federal Reserve, Richard Bynum from PNC, Balan Iyer, who's a retired Air Force General and Fairfax Futures Board Member, and they'll all be coming together for a panel moderated by Jim Dyke. So I think it's a great opportunity to engage business leaders if they aren't already, and hopefully to bolster that support if they are. And the Skip, I think the recommendation that the panel made around Skip was to ensure that we have a regular, steady place at which we'll take recommendations, and there'll be discussions, so it will always be timely.
To report out on this particular topic.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, then that's perfect. Yes.
Yeah, so that it's, it's part of the infrastructure and kind of baked in, so there'll be regular updates to the Skip that will then come to the both, to both boards.
Because this was one of the primary reasons Skip started.
Yes.
And then Skip grew, which is fine, but we need to get back to mission critical. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kofax. I now have Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Evans.
Great. Well, thank you very much for the, for this very interesting and broad-ranging report, very helpful, so. Couple of questions. One is family childcare homes, because we know culturally, not all families want their child to be in a community setting, but in a family daycare setting. And I know that, I believe the county, we're still training those providers, I mean, there's still the, the system of, of training them. So if you can fill me in on where we are with family childcare homes, how many kids we think are being served through that way? And then the other is subsidy slots in other programs, where you have employers providing childcare, because I do think that that is a partnership, particularly in the planned dense development along the metro, because people assume that only really rich people work in those buildings, but they will have a variety of people who, who are working in those buildings. And so subsidy slots in those daycare situations. And I guess that's, I guess that that's it, so. Oh, and then the third part is if you could explain a little bit more about the Community Reinvestment Act. That's something that I don't know. So that's three. Home childcare homes, subsidy slots in other daycare arrangements, and then the Community Reinvestment Act. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Strauss. Yes, we currently have around 1,500 county residents who either hold a state license or a county permit, which enables and authorizes them to care for children in their home. And the Office for Children administers the Institute for Early Learning, as well as a number of other quality initiatives, Virginia's Quality and Rating Improvement System, VQ, as well as the county administers the Northern Region Infant Toddler Specialist Network for the state as well. Those are just a couple of initiatives that we administer and provide for community educators in family childcare homes as well as centers.
Quick question, is the 1,500 children who are served through that, is that included in the other numbers that you showed in other pages?
So it's actually about 1,500 residents who are family childcare providers.
I see.
So the numbers in the charts include children in the childcare subsidy program, birth through age for, who might... through age for, who might be served in a community childcare program, a center-based program, or a family childcare home.
Great, so it includes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then certainly looking, I don't know that we've seen much growth in employee, employer-sponsored childcare centers. Certainly in the 80s and 90s, there was more of a focus. But that is exactly the crux of this partnership that we need to have with businesses coming into the community, so that we really can position early childhood and supporting children's school readiness and having access to care for the current workforce. As you said, all families, regardless of income, need quality early childhood care. And then that second generational piece, it's really the pipeline for their future workforce as well. So I think that's some of the community benefits agreements, that focus for economic development, to see if companies coming to the county, because this is a good place to do business, that they can channel some of those CBAs to early childhood. And that could be regarding space, sponsoring spaces, you know, in redevelopment for early childhood facilities. It could be around education and supporting the early childhood workforce, so that we make sure that we have competent early childhood educators in all settings, partnerships with higher ed, et cetera. So those are the types of strategies that the panel is recommending that the county and the EDA dive into a little bit more. Certainly not my area of expertise, but when we worked with the School Readiness Resources Panel, as Dr. Daron said, we worked with an expert in the field of financing for early childhood. And these were some recommendations. Also, some of our philanthropic partners identified that it's definitely worth pursuing.
And then the question on the Community Reinvestment Act.
And that's the same thing. So that fiscal institutions, they're required to make investments for the CRAs. And that, I don't know that we have focused those CRAs into early childhood in the county to date. And so that's another area that we'll be asking the EDA to take a look at, as well as the county's economic redevelopment staff.
Since I have a minute more, in, in the redevelopment areas where there's intense urbanization along the silver line, right now, there's, there is the assumption that there will be very few school-aged children, and that may end up being the case. But I would think there are going to be plenty of little babies and toddlers, because they are attracting a lot of employees in their 30s and 40s. So I am concerned that we're blindly assuming that there won't be a need for quality early childhood.
And I think that that really is one of the main goals of the board and the panel, to make sure that this becomes customary and pro forma. So it's sort of baked into how we do business here in Fairfax County. When there's an opportunity for redevelopment, and we know there may be new families and residents coming to the county, that we automatically take a look at what early childhood supports and services will be available in that community, in where people are living and where they're working, because it certainly is nice to have your child near your office or your, your place of work as well. So this is sort of moving forward, that it's sort of that, that lens that we look through to make sure that all the residents will have the supports they need. And that's certainly a big part of it.
Ms. Strauss, I just want to say, the board's already talked about the power of the equity lens around providing early childhood experiences. The other lens is the workforce development lens. We are not going to get folks to move here, to live here, if they and their employees can't have access to high-quality early childhood experiences. We're hearing, I haven't been able to verify yet, that Arlington, where Amazon has arrived, is running out of all available pre-K, all available. We can't let that happen in Fairfax. We have to have an equity lens to make sure kids that need those supports get them. And we need to have a workforce development lens to make sure businesses know they can come here, and their employees are going to have access to high-quality childhood experiences. That's how they're going to make sure they have the workforce that they need. So we need to do both, and that's why this is such an important topic for this board and for the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. We have Ms. Evans followed by Mr. Wilson. You're not going to weigh in?
Thank you so much for, for this excellent presentation. I first want to make sure I understand where we are now. So if you put all the different slides together, as I understand it, we're now serving a little less than 5,000 kids currently, 4,787. And we would like to serve 22,000. Is that correct? Is that our goal? That's, that's the total, if you go to slide 12, I believe it is? That's phase one. Well, I was going to get to that, but while we're on this slide. So that 205 million, which is kind of in tiny little print there for a big old number. So that would be to add, add, to go from the 4,787 to 11,310, is that correct? And that would get us up to 200.
Additional, right.
So it's additional to the, additional on top of the 175,000, or 175 million currently being spent. Is that correct?
But the hundreds, yes. So that fiscal mapping looked at all types of services, and this is specifically to the last column on the fiscal mapping that was for those publicly funded.
Which was what, some 60 million? It wasn't the whole 175?
Not the 175.
Right. It's over that far column, 60-some.
Okay. But to get to, to the, our goal, phase one, it would take an additional 205 million?
And that, though, has the caveat that that's simply taking the number of children living in the county, birth to five, at those income levels, not being able to account for what family's desire is, whether they may have a family member at home or have a part-day program. So that's what we, we, we need to figure that out in the coming years to be able to really project.
Okay. I just wanted to, to get the magnitude of what we're, what we're trying to look at here. And I do think that most of this is, what you've outlined here, is either in the purview of the state, we're asking for more, more funding authority of the state, or the, the Board of Supervisors. I do see that, we, we talk here about dedicating space for early childhood education in all of our new and renovated buildings. I do think that that's a worthwhile goal. When, when we talk about dedicated, however, then I think about the SAC rooms, which have become an issue for us, when we see that there are SAC rooms being used, dedicated, as, as we agreed to. And there, there have been times when we've desperately needed that space for, for K through 12. So I just think we have to be very careful what we're agreeing to there, as far as what our responsibilities are. If, if we, I have no problem with adding on to our facilities in such a way where we would intend to provide for that, but I think we have to have some flexibility there. My other question was, the special taxing difference district, that's one of the suggestions here, how would that be different than just the Board of Supervisors raising the tax, the property tax rate?
It's a different strategy. I don't know all the details of it, but it would require state-enabling authorization to levy that tax. And it, we'd have to make the case that the early childhood benefits the whole community. And I believe the structure may be a little bit different, certainly than a real estate tax. But that is a strategy that communities throughout the country have been exploring and using. In the state of Florida, there are a number of counties that have done that in order to establish a dedicated funding stream.
Well, I guess I, as a next step, I would like to have more of an understanding. If this is a county-wide special taxing district, I know we have taxing districts within Fairfax County for specific things within Fairfax County. But if this were a county-wide special taxing district that included the entire county, I would wonder how this is any different than just raising the property tax rates, if you could outline that for me.
Yes. And also, that's the recommendation, to convene the group to really dive deep into this. The School Readiness Resource Panel, as I said, worked over the summer, you know, evaluated all the data and made these overarching recommendations. But there needs to be a next step where people dive into it and get more specifics. And certainly in the recommendation about dedicated early childhood facilities, that's not a mandate, but it's, I think the wording is where needed, and when there are opportunities for redevelopment. So in new schools or in new county facilities, if it's a community where there's a need, just as you were saying, it could be included in future development.
And I would point out that in the past, one of the things we've seen is that where the need is the greatest, the number of, the available facility space is also the least available.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Evans. Before I move on to Mr. Moon, I believe you're on deck. Oh. Mr. Wilson, you're, since we're meeting managers, you're more than welcome to go first.
Oh, thank you. So this is really a jam-packed presentation. Just, I'm, I have to say that I'm still sort of wrapping my arms around the scope of what's presented here, which it seems quite large. I wonder whether or not we have data on how many of the four-year-olds we currently serve versus who desire to have preschool services provided them at taxpayer dollars? Or where are we at on that task? Because I know we've started that.
I think he's, like, the waitlist we've been talking about for a while. So what, like, what's the waitlist for four-year-olds?
Waitlist is a couple hundred for Head Start and FCPS pre-K right now.
Is that, is that for the, up to 300% of the?
No, that's lower. So we don't have that for up to 300%.
Okay, yeah. So I think, I mean, that's a, I mean, this is a really large proposal we've got here. I think, you know, we're, we're still working on some baby steps. And I kind of wonder, as a board, whether we should have a conversation that's a little bit smaller scope, just in terms of how can we deal with that. We also, we also are not sweeping into this conversation, I think we should, is our own teachers, our own workforce, and helping them with childcare. Because I know we've talked about community schools, and when I ask, in the community schools proposal, is there a daycare setting use planned? And, and the answer was no. And so we've got to, I think we have to turn, I mean, our primary purpose as a board is to supervise the superintendent in the management and operation of the school system. So I think where we've got some steps that we need to resolve first, that we ought to turn to those first and figure out what the funding mechanism would be for those. And this just, I'm, I'm sort of, like I say, still trying to get my arms around what this panel has come up as a proposal, when I feel like there's like 50 steps maybe between what we're doing now and what's on the agenda here. And I'd like to at least bring it maybe towards, like, what can we do in the next two to three years to, you know, sort of accomplish some of these near-term goals that we might have?
Mr. Wilson, just on that one, to, to work with Dr. Daron and the rest of the county folks, you'd like to see more phases than just a phase one, phase two. Take phase one and break it down into smaller pieces with cost ideas instead of one big number like Ms. Evans was saying.
Well, maybe that's one way to phrase it. I guess my feeling is that we've had these conversations about, about much more, in some ways, manageable concepts, and we're still a long ways from achieving those goals. And, and as a board, I think in a work session, it would be, it might be more useful if we could talk about those sorts of topics in terms of getting down to the nitty-gritty of how can we help our teachers?
Right. And that was the second takeaway, a specific piece for childcare access for FCPS teachers.
Yeah. And I think even buried in, in those two topics that I've raised, and there's probably more, there's probably 100 other questions about how do we accomplish, and how do we get there? Because, you know, we, we, you know, we very recently had conversations about some extreme overcrowding at some of our schools, and we're talking about now adding children's spaces in our schools. So I really do appreciate this presentation. It's quite ambitious, I would say. But I think that, for me at least, I'm still, I'm still in the sort of information gathering part of this. And, you know, as someone who works with a professional who works in the zero-to-three population every day, I recognize how critical it is to bring services to that population. But again, maybe it's because of my home situation and my wife's profession, it makes me wonder, well, what are we doing with the, with the children with special needs? Like, are we even coming close to meeting that segment of the population's needs? And we, I mean, I think there's clear data in that area that shows that's even more impactful, when you can provide early intervention to a child with autism in, in that population. So I just have, I think I have a lot more questions, but I do appreciate this presentation.
Just also to provide a little bit more clarity and context, this was a result of a Board of Supervisors board matter directing the panel to provide a very bold and innovative goal, which is the goal here on page 18, which does, to your point, look at a much broader perspective in terms of the number of students we'll serve, looking at the different age levels, and also the different poverty levels. And so the charge initially from this get-go, when the 18 members convened, was what can you do to set a very bold goal? Knowing that, yes, to your point, there are various steps to get us there. What are the recommendations to outline for us to say, we want to reach this very, very broader, you know, group of students and, and residents that are not being served? And so that was the task that this panel took in terms of reaching this. That's why to your, you know, I'm hearing your comments, this seems a lot. It was a lot, but that was the direction we were asked to do. And that's why we came with this on page 18, where we have this very broad perspective. But yes, you're right, it has to then, that's our big goal. What do we do to get there? So just wanted to give a little more context to that.
Thank you, Dr. Daron. That's helpful.
And if I may, the work is all in the context of the county and schools Equitable School Readiness Strategic Plan, which addresses some of those domains that you're talking about, I think, supporting young children with special needs, supporting families, focusing on the early childhood workforce, as well as public engagement. But these definitely were bold, far-reaching recommendations, and that our work continues, you know, every day with those things that we can't address right away. Thank you.
And, Mr. Wilson, I really appreciate you helping to frame what others watching might be trying to understand. And Dr. Daron, I think you explained it best. So this isn't necessarily for the school board to take any action at all, because the Board of Supervisors had asked this work to be done. It was then brought to the skipped committee, just for, again, the skips overview to, when we received the presentation, many of us provided input about maybe just additional information within the presentation that would give deeper context. But it then went to, back to the Board of Supervisors, who asked for this work for their briefing. But to your point, this is a very large scope. We're, our chairman, Karen Corbett Sanders, asked for our school board to get this briefing, just so we could have a deeper understanding of what the Board of Supervisors is trying to do under, technically, their purview, because we are K-12, and they're recognizing that as one of the largest jurisdictions in the country, we have to be more innovative and forward-thinking in our pre-K and early childhood instruction. So in the end, our two boards created skipped for this very reason. It was for early childhood education and for disparities in juvenile justice and student discipline. So those were the two key things. And today's presentation is helping us understand the work that, not just the panel, but that the Board of Supervisors, and certainly with our input, will continue to focus on improving overall quality of life in Fairfax County and student success. So with that, I have Mr. Moon and I to take our first turns at speaking. And I currently have two go-backs for Ms. Kizkamara and Ms. Strauss. And now Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. And Marianne, thank you for calling me earlier this afternoon to answer some of my questions. Appreciate it. So let me ask you this question first. The $175 million we just spent, I'm looking at the fiscal mapping, total funding is 175. But for all the childhood services, it is 69 out of 175, and that is serving 4,787 children. Would you be able to tell me what the other, 100, another, I guess, 110 million, how many children are being served with that 110 on the left-hand side? All that blue?
I apologize, I don't have that.
You don't have that?
At the top of my head. But that includes children who are, their families are part But that includes children who are, their families are participating in home visiting, maybe in child welfare. It's also the community funding for those types of supports as well. So I don't have that broken down.
Okay, thank you. Now I am going to go to slide number 19, where you will see, you are giving a sort of extent, magnitude of financial resources that would be required to meet the recommendations. So from going, you know, if you were to serve another 11,310 students for early childhood program, I see the number amount is 25 million. I mean, so if it costs about 69 for 4,787, but 11,310 is additional 25, is almost three times as many as 4,787.
I think if you're taking a look at the number served in different types of programs, in some programs, there's not a parent co-pay, in the childcare subsidy, there is a parent co-pay. What we did for the methodology for estimating the cost, again, is to take simply two pieces of data that we know are accurate. One is the number of children birth to five at those income levels, and then what we're currently paying for full-time, full-year care for a child in the subsidy program in a center-based program. So that's the methodology. It doesn't account for variances in children's age or the type of setting or a family co-pay. Does that answer?
I get it, I get it. What about, do you have any preliminary figure for the Phase Two of the 20%, 6,263 children?
You know, I think that it will probably take quite a while to get through Phase One. So we could do the math for Phase Two, but recognizing that in the coming years, costs will change. And I think at that point, we'll also have that percentage rate for uptake, so that we'll be able to have a little bit more precise estimates, understanding what parents are choosing to use care and services, and be able to calculate it a little bit more closely.
I was just trying to get a fuller picture of what sort of investment.
Sure. I mean, we can do the math with adding the other 6,000 at that same rate.
Okay. If we, so we have 70 million for 4,787, another 205, that makes 275, and perhaps, probably more than another 100 million for 6,263. So that is probably closer to 400 million out of currently about a school side and county side operating budget altogether is about 5.1 or 5.2 billion. So we are putting in, we need to put in about 8% of that operating budget, sort of, to provide early childhood services in a publicly funded program for all children under the age of five, under 300% FPR. Is that basically what the picture looks like?
You're doing the math with that same methodology, and you add the 6,200 children?
Yes, okay. About 8% of the county resource would have to be.
I can't do that off the top of my head. I can confirm that for you.
That's my math, okay.
Yeah, that would be your math.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, I will go ahead and take a turn. And I really appreciate following Mr. Moon, because that was, this slide here in particular, I would recommend for the benefit of both boards and the public, that there be a little more detail provided, maybe another slide that helps break down some of that number, because the 205 million without a report or a study for us to be able to get the context behind it, it's, again, important to know, and I imagine especially for Fairfax County residents who are following this issue, 205 million annually coming from whom? You know, what's that breakout in terms of, what's county revenue that would be required of that? What would be state, federal, or any other funds coming in? So I would see maybe another chart to help people understand that the ambitious goal that's laid out there, if we were to capture in our 300% for poverty and below, then we would want to know that. So that's going to be one of my questions to ask. The other thing is that I really appreciate that some of my colleagues were talking about, when we look to future building developments, especially affordable housing, then if it is the county's desire to co-locate services and really look at sort of strategic development, then certainly having that co-location of early childhood services and childcare would be important. I think it's also, it's very powerful to be thinking about the fact that the cost for year-round childcare, as you talked about, full-time, is at least $23,000 a year. And for, as we saw many of the families, when you're at 300% of, at the poverty line or below, people's salaries, I mean, you're not even doing the gross take-home pay. That's, you know, they're, or you're looking at their gross take-home pay, not even what they net. How are people affording to be able to do this? And I also really appreciate Mr. Wilson bringing this back to center, which is, we know both boards have been very concerned about the existing waitlist. And so while we want to be forward-thinking, and we need to develop as jurisdictions around the country, and one of the most sophisticated jurisdictions around the country, how do we have early childhood education for our residents? But in the near term, what are we doing right now? Because as Dan Stork, our former school board colleague, used to say, the year and the life of a child, we don't get that back. So for every year we go without a child getting pre-Ked while we're waiting to solve the problem is a year that we missed an opportunity to help students. So I've already used up my minutes of time, but I would like if you could just speak to, again, about my desire to get a little more detail on there, how we might be able to do that. Maybe it's going to be part of a next step, but at least did you understand what I was asking?
If, I think I hear your desire to have a breakdown for what types of funding would be leveraged in this. And so I definitely think it's a next step. Again, these are recommendations that the panel came up with for further consideration and implementation. And that will take some work, as we've talked about, to get some additional information and some decision points that will need to be made, certainly not by the panel. But as that happens, and these levers are pushed, and we get a sense if there will be forthcoming revenue or flexibility from the state, then we could incorporate that into those projections, if that's what you're asking.
No, mine was more about just the specific breakout of, if it's estimated that to do that, you're looking at additional $205 million in cost. The question would be, is that 205 million just on the shoulders of Fairfax County tax revenue? Or is that, that's 205 million where we would, again, anticipate getting a certain percentage of state and federal funds, and then what's the delta for the county revenue that we would need?
I see.
To make that, because that 205 million could seem very reasonable. It could also see, you know, that per year, I mean, we've been trying to put about 100 million a year roughly, when we were looking at employee raises. So getting that 205 in context will be really important to understand the, what would be the expectation of federal and state funds to offset then the delta for Fairfax County to have to take on.
And I think, you know, right now, the funding source that we get from the state related to this is the Virginia Preschool Initiative. So that's something we'll certainly be watching in this upcoming General Assembly, and as the governor releases his proposed budget in December, to see if there are any changes to the cost per pupil funding amount, if there's an infusion of additional dollars to serve more children. Another area is the Childcare Subsidy Program, which really is comprised primarily of federal dollars through the community, the Childcare and Development Block Grant at the federal level. The state provides maintenance of effort funding as well. And then I always feel fortunate that the county invests quite a bit of local general fund dollars to expand that program even farther, so that we can serve about 4,000 children monthly birth to five. But I'm not sure, I haven't heard too much discussion at the state level about additional childcare subsidy dollars, but that's something that we certainly can watch, and Michael Malloy as well, take a look at that. But those really, right now, are the funding streams particular to this conversation.
So I'll ask in my next step, what I would want to see is, that 205 million broken out, based on our current formula and funding? So we can't control what positive changes might come out of the state or federal, but based on our existing formula models, what, how would that 205 break out annually, falling on county versus state versus federal funding? So at this point, again, I have three go-backs right now. I have Ms. Kies-Gamara, followed by Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Darnett Kovacs.
So I realize this is a very kind of high-level, it's a high, pretty high-level discussion. But the name of this is school readiness, and I guess where the way I want to focus on this now is that hopefully the efforts that are happening as a result of what's being discussed now actually prepares kids to come into our schools and be successful. And I assume that's the goal. And so with that, I'm hoping, and this may, these discussions may have been happening, I'm not a part of the SKEPT committee, but I do know that the demographics of our county are changing with more students speaking different languages and that sort of thing. And so I'm wondering if there is an ability to drill down a little bit more in anticipation of what the changes are, and whether these costs are anticipating language supports for these kids. I know we've had problems at the, at our, sorry, at the level within the schools of just even being able to certify teachers to be able to handle that. Whether that's an impediment, have we thought about those impediments? How we're addressing those at the state level? I'm assuming that this includes anticipating more students coming in who have special needs. I know that we have kids evaluated all the time for special education now. And so maybe this is a little different than our normal work session, because we usually would get numbers of how many kids we're anticipating are coming in. And then that would help us to figure out what we're going to deal with when they are kindergarten age. And so I think, I don't know if my colleagues are feeling the same way, but I'm, you know, kind of anxious to say, okay, well, where's, where's, where's the meat in here? There is meat, forgive me, I don't mean that in a negative way. But meat in the sense of, what is that going to mean for us in preparation for these kids as they come into our schools? So I was just wondering whether these numbers anticipate that and how we're addressing that. And then the other concern, I know that we have regions with higher numbers of students that are free and reduced lunch and that sort of thing. And I'm hoping that as we roll, begin to roll this out, we anticipate communicating specifically with those communities and how, what, what is our way of making sure we're more effective with those communities? Because I know even in our discussions, oftentimes, those voices are missing, and I don't want that to continue. The others, the last concern that I will raise is with respect to how we're anticipating and projecting the number of students that we're going to have. And I've heard, and as a former planning commissioner, I know we've had lots of discussions about the formula, and, you know, the assumption seems to be that when we build these, with, especially around the metro and there are more apartments as opposed to houses, we're assuming there won't be students, a lot of kids there. I'm not sure we're going, as the economy changes, I'm not sure that's a correct assumption. But I'm, but I don't know if that's part of this discussion either. So just some more things to think about. I know that this is very, so much, you know, it's not really, it's part of it is what we're doing, but it's so much dependent on so many other folks. I just hope that our expertise at this table can help to inform and make the process more effective.
Well, I'll just start out saying that Carla Bruce just stepped out. But Carla Bruce and I, serving on the panel, definitely were raising the question and the concern around what are the different demographics, the type of students that we have to serve. What Anne Marie though described here in terms of the two data points for the cost, were simply the number of students and then what we know, the 18,200. But absolutely, we are, and the entire panel was dedicated and committed to saying, we have to meet the needs of varied types of students. We are seeing larger ELL populations, English learner populations. We would definitely be meeting the needs of our students with disabilities. But in terms of costing those outnumber-wise, as to your point, this was an initial recommendation about what is the number? What do we know as the large, broad goal of how we want more access for all? And so let's start with that. But absolutely, those conversations were there and need to be there, and I know will be a part of the work going forward.
I saw 13 seconds, but you were talking so much.
Actually, we didn't start you till well into your comments.
Oh, I just want to add that hopefully the discussion includes the ACE kind of evaluation. I know, I know that's a discussion we have in general, but I'm hoping as we look at kids coming into our system that we can have that more broadly, so that we're dealing with that earlier.
Absolutely. And I might add some more.
I appreciate your response, and certainly all the cogent points that you raised, that moving forward, we need to factor all of that in. But, you know, I'm very transparent, and we really simply did that math so that we could set a context. Because like many other communities throughout the country, these are large aspirational goals. They are expensive, which is why we need to engage our community and build public will about why this is a critical investment, not only for young children and their families, but for the well-being of our whole county. And we need to get at it from multiple ways. We need to have long-term funding strategies so that we can be thoughtful and planful in our work, and consider all of those factors that you just laid out so beautifully, frankly, about what families really need, how can we best meet the assets and capitalize on the assets and strengths of our community and address some of the challenges. So this by no means factors in all of those. It's simply an equation with the number of children presently living in the county at these age levels, and the cost right now for full-time, full-year care in a center-based program. So thank you.
And I'll just add one other piece. A lot of the work and discussion by the panel, again, was really around the access and the capacity. But that has to be joined with the other conversation that we've been having about the quality of the early childhood that's happening. And that is where we would definitely be considering the type of learner, their families, and their needs. This panel did not delve deeply into that. However, that was part of the conversation. But the goal was just about the capacity and the access. But several times, the conversations are looking at other localities, the reports that we saw, there was always the saying, this has to mirror and really be a complete part of the quality. And that includes what some of the things you were just raising. So we are committed to that as well.
Great. Before I move on to Ms. Strauss, I am now up to four remaining board members with go-backs. And from a time check, we did start five minutes behind. But we are scheduled to be moving into the next work session, technically five minutes ago. So I would just ask my colleagues and staff if we can keep our remarks as brief as possible, given that I know we will look forward to many future discussions in this great work.
Yes, great, thank you. And Dr. Raygrun, I'm glad to know that you're going to be speaking at a workforce development piece in early childhood. Because I do, I mean, when we're looking at large cost numbers, that's why I do believe that public-private participation in this, because if they bear the larger cost of the capital investment, and then through subsidy slots or whatever, I mean, that is obviously another important piece. But I'm wondering, will there, will there be an update on particularly how private developers and large business owners are actually going to become players in this? I mean, will there be an update on that? Because I think that's a critical piece.
Yes, we definitely will. I'll give you an update after this week. I think something that you've touched on, this was a resource study. This was not an implementation plan for Fairfax County Public Schools for next year. implementation plan for Fairfax County Public Schools for next year, and that's the tension. This isn't our report to give you lined out by the different types of kids, the participation rates, the dollar amounts. Because the truth is, we're not there. I think like Ms. Darrenet Kofax said, we've been talking about this, talking about this. What I like is that the Board of Supervisors wants to start to talk about a resource plan. We need to get that going. Then we, on the school system side, need to work with all the providers in this space and come up with an implementation plan that makes sense. The funding source that's not cited, like you just put your finger on, is what can private companies do to step up and say, this is part of the benefit to add, which is pre-K services? Mr. Wilson is saying, for us as an employer, I believe part of the tension in the marketplace is going to be employees are going to expect some sort of access to high-quality pre-K as part of coming into this area, not to hear that all of the rooms are full. So I think, I'll let you know after this week, I'll give you an update. And I do think we'll need another work session, maybe with our school folks, really giving you a more detailed piece of what implementation could look like over a period of time.
Thank you, because I know there's been a lot of discussion about the aging population in Fairfax County, but with the huge push for business expansion and in those areas of greater employment, the whole resource for everybody. So I'm glad that as a county and hopefully as a state, we're taking a look at the needs of the very young children because they're coming. Thank you.
Okay, I have Ms. Kofax, followed by Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Quick question on the Kingstown consolidation facility, what that is, what pre-K that is, but you can answer that after I just go through my comments. I do appreciate those that call this plan bold, but I have to say, this has been something many of I must have been talking about on this board, on previous boards, and have been asking for for over eight years. Dr. Braybran, I appreciate that you called it a resource study because that's what it is. And I do want to emphasize, this is really not a result of staff, school or county's inability to get this to us. Staff has been innovative and responsive, but this has been a result of a couple things. The state's inability to resolve any funding formulas. It was Governor Warner who started down the road to universal pre-K, and there have been several administrations, subsequent administrations, who've talked and talked about it, but there has been no investment. This has been an inability for our county to invest adequately. We have talked about this time and time and time again. And again, I am encouraged by the Board of Supervisors that they organize this panel, and I remain hopeful that action can be taken. But this is something that we have talked about for a long time, three years ago and skipped. And I know that because right after the last presidential election, we talked about an early childhood investment fund at the state level. Again, not a lot of action at the state level. And, you know, why is this important to us as a K through 12 system? So children come to us ready to learn, they need less remediation. Quality pre-K can lead to less referrals to the discipline process. And quality pre-K teachers can uncover those kinds of things if a child needs special needs, if a child needs a special education, if a child needs acceleration, they can identify those things in a quality pre-K program. So I really just want to thank all of you for your hard work. I am hopeful that our two boards and the community can come together to do this. And to begin, the resources that you outlined on page 19 that are necessary, that we have been asking for, that are there, and you've brought this to us before, you've brought this to us in various ways, but I think this is like, in totality, what do we need to do and how can we start chipping away at it? So I, again, want to thank you and Maura and both of your staffs for all that you've done, Dr. Duran, you and your staff to get this done. But this is, you know, I would say I'm excited about it. It's not bold to tell us what we need to have done and what we know we've needed to do for the past eight years. So I'm looking forward and I'm hopeful that since this panel brought these recommendations that have been talking about and put them together in a package, that we can move forward and really start investing both state and county.
Ms. Kofax, thank you very much. I know in particular, those of us who've been serving with you for eight years, that you and our colleague Pat Hines really brought this eight years ago as a signature. And so I think you have the commitment of both boards. I appreciate.
I mean, pre-K is usually is four-year-olds. We're really talking early childhood and a different type of programming for the zero-to-three population than you would for a four-year-old, right?
Definitely, and the panel was very intentional in talking about early childhood experiences from birth onward is what the goal is.
The technical definition, early childhood is birth to third grade. Pre-K is up to five.
Okay.
So that's the technical difference.
Yeah, so just to be helpful for the public, I think, to be able to understand, if there were distinctions, what are we talking about? On page 12, and I don't know if we can go to that slide real quick, there's a decline in the number of children kind of from four years old back to under one. Was there any explanation for what that is? Because it's pretty consistent, the numbers decline as the children get younger.
This was data that we received from the ESRI clearinghouse, which I believe the public schools and the county use for American Community Survey data, et cetera. So we are simply recounting that information.
Off the top of my head, and I know I'm previewing upcoming attractions for SIP trends in a month, I believe we continue to see a declining birth rate in Fairfax County. And that's where I think the numbers are, Mr. Wilson, but I can verify when we have our membership analysis.
Yeah, and I think that same, that same trend on each line shows up, so that the numbers of under 300% is highest in the fourth year and lowest in the under one. On page 13, the next slide, this is a slide that seems to be devoted to the advocacy organization 0to3.org, which I'm not familiar with. It sounds like a wonderful advocacy organization, but I just wondered how that organization became part of the presentation and why?
It was not intended for advocacy, they're a good source of information and research. And the School Readiness Resources Panel, as I shared, recognized the critical timeframe of birth to eight, but really of investing very early for young children and that some of those learning gaps and disparities occur very early in the first two years of a child's life. And this was data that simply supported that to illustrate and highlight that.
Okay, so there was no reason to choose that organization versus other early childhood organizations? And then last, it talks about having early programming available to all families. Was there a discussion about what you would do with a family that might fit into the income parameters that wanted to keep their child at home for personal reasons? Would they receive a stipend or something to help defray their costs? Because obviously if somebody's staying home, they're watching the children, was that part of the concept too?
Not a recommendation, but really the goal is to ensure that wherever children are having their early childhood experiences, whether it's home with a family member, that they have the supports they need. That might be, you know, the public schools, you have a wonderful social-emotional group for families in the community that can come with their child and meet other parents and engage and learn how to best support their child. It could be that type of touch to a family that might have both parents in the workforce and they do need childcare throughout the day. So we're simply looking at.
Yeah, I understand, but there's an economic incentive. If you're going to fund services outside of the home, then that person has an economic incentive to do that, and then they're free to work a job. Versus if you could neutralize that by saying, hey, we don't consider, you know, a daycare center or a home daycare any better or worse than maybe even, you know, you might think about it as benefiting the child more to stay home, figuring out a way to neutralize that by funding.
The panel didn't discuss that, but I understand what you're suggesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I just wanted a brief go-back myself because I think my concern that I want to make sure maybe can be brought back with the panel's work is there's almost two efforts here. One is pre-K, and we're looking again at the waitlist for four-year-olds or even our waitlist for three-year-olds. And then there's early childhood education that many have been referencing in this work session related to childcare as a whole. And it's not that they're to be bifurcated, but one is a far more expansive effort, ambitious effort. And this isn't something that's just related to Fairfax County. I mean, nationally, in this country, we have been wrestling with what responsibility do we have as a society for affordable childcare? But as I understood the two boards, when we began to grapple this, at least when I joined the board eight years ago, is we were very concerned about our pre-K waitlist and having children ready to learn. And so I don't want that lost in terms of that when you look at the massive, massive cost associated with childcare that faces not just Fairfax County Public Schools, 28,000 employees, or the county employees, but then every resident of early childhood-age children. So I guess I would like for you maybe to comment a little bit, is there a mindfulness here that the original effort was to make sure that at minimum we address the pre-K instruction and preparation so children come to school ready to learn, knowing that as we address that and then expand it, but not necessarily to have something to, I think, as Mr. Wilson and others noted, this is sort of a very large-scale strategic look. But then trying to take this in phases, even the phase that's being described is far more ambitious than, I think, first going to, the greatest concern was children aren't getting pre-K at all and arriving in kindergarten with huge learning gaps. So could you just provide that clarity as we close out?
I think that the board was interested in looking how we can expand and improve our early childhood system and provide school readiness supports for young children and their family. And that really begins prenatally, certainly at birth and onward. And so the panel took that charge and identified a goal of not segregating four-year-olds only, recognizing that the return on investment is higher the earlier you start. And so again, going back to the charge to be bold and innovative and to really look at the scope of what we'd like to have happen in our community for young children and their families, it is a look from birth onward.
No, I appreciate that.
So we can tease it down, certainly in the school board and the county board for different ages, but the panel was very transparent and deliberate in their decision to recognize that early childhood is birth to eight and that they wanted to build strategies and funding mechanisms that have a high return on investment and address those needs of children, not only four-year-olds, and not only in a public school setting. The whole premise of this is to look at having a public and private partnership and bringing those key partners together, the county, the schools and community early childhood programs, to jointly and collaboratively help to ensure that all children, birth to five, have high-quality early childhood experiences, whatever the setting that family chooses. And so that really is the scope of the recommendations that the panel made. It certainly doesn't preclude anybody from taking a look at different ages and different services, but that's very clear that that was the scope that the panel approached with. So I appreciate you highlighting that it's a little bit different than looking only at four-year-olds.
And I want to be clear too, I didn't say only four-year-olds. I know for most children, where we've been fortunate to have some sort of pre-K for our children, it's usually, they have two years of pre-K instruction. So I wasn't secretly saying it's only going to be for one year. It's just, we were talking about zero-to-three-year-olds and then the three-to-five-year-olds who end up, once you turn three, then starting two years of pre-K, so.
If I may, there's another reason also to look at it in its entirety. In other communities throughout the country that have focused primarily on three- and four-year-olds, what sometimes happens is they have a negative impact on the supply of care for babies and toddlers. So this panel was aware of that and was intentional in wanting to make sure that we had a mixed delivery approach. We're always cognizant that what happens with babies, toddlers, three-year-olds is important and part of that continuum. So that's the thinking.
I agree, and I know we're going to wrap up to next steps. Just to be clear though, since I've spent six years as a member of Skip, my concern is, six years later, after Ms. Strauss and I first started on Skip, we are still with hundreds of students on waitlists for even just our four-year-olds. And that's, I'm just trying to delineate out that while we look expansively, which research supports and return on investment supports, I don't want it lost, that I hope this county continues to look at ways that we get to our four-year-olds as soon as possible and to our three-year-olds as soon as possible, and then all the other stuff continues to be a focal point, but we've got to work on these waitlists. So, thank you. And I really want to thank you again for your expertise and your hard work.
Oh, thank you. It's my pleasure. It's important work.
Yep. So Madam Clerk, if we can pull up the next steps that have been captured. Okay, so Ms. Corbett Sanders, we will start with yours at the top.
It's break out the increased funding of 11 million between FCPS budget and county budget.
Is it? Yeah, okay.
You could even say budget allocations.
Yeah, budget allocations, I was going to say. What we're each bringing to the table.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. The second one is on slide 19. We have a chart that shows the total number, but it's not broken out between of the students who are at 200% versus 300%. We're not able to at this point.
I'm not sure that we'll be able to do that by family.
Okay. Make sure everybody's got their microphones on, so it's being captured.
And Anne Marie, I know you're new to this, we don't know whether we can or can't. I mean, if we can, we will, and if we can't, we'll explain in the next step.
You must ask the question, and we will provide everything that we can.
What's not captured there was what that Phase 1 looks like, and it somewhat addresses what Ms. McLaughlin just mentioned as to, you know, Phase 1, do we have the initial focus on four-year-olds and then three-year-olds, two-and-a-half-year-olds?
Are you referencing the chart that breaks out the ages?
The 205 million to achieve.
But it's really looking at this and how it applies to that.
Yeah. And so not only, we'd like to unpack it a little, timeframe and who you're going to address first. And then the next one is. And then the next one is more of a strategic look at where we place early childhood because of that tension between a penny for early childhood, they're now saying two pennies for affordable housing. Is there some way that we can optimize both and have in our affordable housing a pre-K part of it, class, you know, perhaps pre-K classrooms?
Dedicated space.
Dedicated space.
Strategic planning for that? Again, I think, or, yeah.
What's not there is the language about, you talk about child opportunity zones, and are we looking at the opportunity zones from the federal-state definition?
Yeah, and we have not in that slide, it was opportunity neighborhoods, but we certainly would consider that moving forward.
Yeah, because there's a significant overlay between the two, but the biggest piece of it is the public-private partnership and partnerships and the incentive of up to 40 years of tax relief. And so if we can utilize those fiscal instruments, then it's not 205 million that we are deciding do we put it in K through 12 or pre-K, it's how can we work effectively with those tools that are available?
So I just want to make sure, Ms. Corbett Sanders, the most recent bullet you put up there is looking at opportunity zones from federal side.
Federal-state, yeah.
Okay.
Federal-state incentive programs.
Okay.
You all may notice that that's an area that I used to work in quite extensively.
Well, and I just know that once a few days goes past, the, if, if our bullet point next steps aren't clear, people will be like, what was that again? So, all right, we have next, Ms. Strauss, it looks like you had two next step requests.
I guess the, yeah, just so that she will understand, I would just love to know how many children in these age ranges, if we have the numbers, are currently being served either through home daycare or subsidy slots? We probably have that number?
Subsidy, we definitely do.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're working on capacity information in community early childhood programs so that we can have a sense where babies and two-year-olds are and threes and fours as well.
At least with, right, with, because in, in, I know when we license home daycare, there, there is a cap, depending on age, as to how many children they can serve. And even if we take a, you know, if we have 1,500 approved and how many approved for zero to two and how many, then you get a sense of, yeah, what is the capacity? Because that's really what I'm looking at is, is current capacity with where we are. And, and then my next is the Community Reinvestment Act. You've, you've put some information in the presentation, I don't know if there's any more to it or not. Okay, otherwise that's it. Great, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Evans, it's like you've got a next step.
Yeah, I, I, that, I guess that captures it. I just want to know, yeah, what's the difference? And, you know, do I see any differences as a taxpayer, property owner?
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I think that, that's close, but it's not really versus how many would want preschool. It's really the, the four-year-olds would be unserved, expanded income threshold, right? So, well, no, the first part's fine, it's how many four-year-olds currently serve versus how many would, would, who are unserved, would, would be unserved under the expanded income threshold.
So the numbers of four-year-olds currently served, we can provide for those in programs that receive public funding, but the broader community have that data.
Yeah, I thought we did have some numbers on kids that were receiving qualified preschool services, but maybe I'm mistaken about that, but.
Yeah, we'll, we'll provide everything that we have.
So I, I think, Mr. Wilson, if I can maybe help with this, I thought what you were trying to understand is, so we, we're trying to get an idea of how many of our four-year-olds are on the current waitlist, and then if we expanded it to 300%.
Yeah, that's right, that's a fair way to say it.
So first it was how many four-year-olds are currently sitting on our waitlist? And then secondly, if we were to expand to that 300% of the federal poverty level, how many more students might that capture up? So it kind of helps the, both boards understand, right now, if our waitlist, we've whittled down, I remember when it used to be over 800, and now it's come down to, I think, several hundred, correct?
Yeah.
So what if we expand it to 300, are we back to having anywhere from 800 to 1,000 or maybe even more students at the four-year-old level that don't have service right now in Fairfax County?
That captures the question, thank you, ma'am.
Okay. And then, Mr. Moon?
That's actually 175 million on slide 11, and that will do.
Yeah, and that's, we will do our best, but some children might be receiving-
Of course, you can only do your best.
Yeah, to do, do unduplicated services.
So mine, just to simplify the bullet, was a breakout of the 205 million based on the current formula for federal-state versus county funds. Okay. And then Ms. Kizgimara had asked how we increase the outreach, especially to underserved communities. I think she was saying, how do we increase our communications outreach? All right, and then Ms. Strauss, you had 137.
And I guess it was for the superintendent to report back on the, what's the name of the conference?
After the Fairfax Futures Meeting.
After the Fairfax Futures Meeting. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. I do have a question about the Fairfax Futures, so do we know if Chairman Boliva or anyone from the Board of Supervisors will be attending or involved in the Fairfax Futures Conference?
A number of the board members are on the host committee for the event this Wednesday, and hopefully will be able to attend.
Okay. The reason I ask is because I have a friend who is involved with Fairfax Futures, and we, when we were speaking about this most recently, she was very surprised that I hadn't heard anything about this and was a little concerned that the school board wasn't somehow engaged in this. So I think if Dr. Braybrand's going and board supervisor members are going, I, at minimum, our chairman of the board, Karen Corbett Sanders, or her designee, should be present for that. I don't know who needs to look into that, but it's really important when we're talking about the partnership between the two boards and the involvement in that.
You didn't get one this year, I didn't get one either. So, yeah, if you can look into that, yeah, please, please do. Yeah, because I-
Do you typically get invited, Ms. Fairfax?
I do, but that's from my earlier involvement with the Child Care Advisory Council.
So I, yeah, I would appreciate the, the follow-up that it's-
We'll follow up immediately after words I'll ask.
Yeah, that, I don't think there was any invitation for the board, school board representation, and I do think that's a valuable partnership.
We hope you'll be able to come.
Yep. And then, do we have any more, Madam Clerk, after 137? Okay. We're almost there. Okay. I just was looking to see if, did, is 137 the last that you captured? Okay. And then Ms. Schultz, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I just had a, a question, whether or not it was covered, and I, I feel like I've asked this in the past and I don't remember what the status is, on whether or not we could build a public-private partnership for the four-year-old, specifically for the four-year-olds, so that if we don't, if we haven't gotten them off the waitlist, and we know where they are now because of the heat map, are we, could we buy up any open spots that happen to be in community preschool so that at least they get, and I get that it's not the same and it's not, I understand all that. But, you know, people like Mr. Faust and I are like, very much aligned on this, like something is better than nothing, and they're going to be with us the following fall, I mean, most likely. I mean, I understand there's mobility and whatever, but finding a way to do something to cover the gap for those who don't get off that waitlist, depending upon where those pressures are, have, has the staff explored that? That's kind of a perennial thing I brought, I brought up.
Good afternoon. We do have children that are served in community early childhood programs. The Board of Supervisors, like the school board, continued the VPI plus funding, so we have 36 children in community early childhood programs that may otherwise have been on a waiting list. The board has also funded some additional slots for children to attend community early childhood programs. And those are programs that participate in the Virginia Preschool Initiative, and so they're meeting quality standards, and that's an opportunity for us to ensure that additional children are being served.
Anne Marie, is that the four-year-olds or is that the, you keep saying early childhood, but Ms. Schultz, I think, was asking about-
Yeah, I, can I, if it's okay, I'll clarify my own question. I, I appreciate that. What I mean is that they're still on that waiting list, they're four-year-olds that we're still not meeting. And I mean, it'd be great to get them all off the list, but there's only one chance for the four-year-olds. And so that's kind of been my focus, is that's a gap, that's, there's a gap between what we're providing and what the need is. And if we can, what we can do to close that gap, 36 kids is great, but it's a, it's many, many more. So what I'm talking about is specifically working with community preschool providers, and, you know, we could train them up, we could provide some additional professional development, whatever it is, but basically enter into a contract with, and, you know, they, they want to fill their schools too, that they're, they're better off being full. And if they have slots and we have children who don't have a space and they're on a waiting list, this is-
I get the idea, I, I get the idea, I don't know it off the top of my head. It's, are we doing a regular scan to say to the private providers, do you have slots open, do you have slots, and let the waiting list folks know, hey, there's six slots here, eight slots there?
I think it, it's, I don't think it's a scan, I think it has to be a more formal approach by the power of staff to say, we're going to create basically almost like a universal contract, and if, if providers have slots and they're open as of whatever, August 5th, I, I'm just picking a date.
Yeah.
And, and, and we have kids left and we don't have, you know, there's nothing left.
I got it, an agreement already prepaid, if they have open slots, we move them right off the waitlist.
It's a, it's a bridge opportunity for us to meet a need that it, it only comes around once for those kids.
And that, that's what we're able to do with our early childhood, early childhood learning and development slots. I think there's a little over 100 that are currently funded, so when we do our coordinated enrollment, if a family's not able to access a Head Start or FCPS program and they're not eligible for some reason to be in the childcare subsidy program, then we have been able to partner with early childhood programs in the community that meet quality standards and are part of our Virginia preschool cohort, and we're able to place children, threes and fours, in those slots so that they'll have full-time, full-year care. So we are starting to do that.
Okay, so basically my next step is probably a report back on what's that gap still of what's on the waiting list, and how we could potentially, you know, what, what would be, I mean, priority funding, we would have to make some choices, just, you know, the gap analysis of what we might be able to do and how much it might cost. I'd be interested in that.
And Ms. Schultz, I will just share with you, that's something that I've brought up for years, and along with Supervisor McKay in particular at our SCIP discussions, is that we know as we try to move toward the optimal delivery of pre-K, in the meantime, we know we have excellent accredited pre-K programs in the county through our faith-based groups and other community organizations. Why aren't we enlarging the voucher program so that families who are on our waitlist and qualify for that supports, what are we doing to narrow that gap between kids on the waitlist to kids being able to use those slots? So I do, I do think that Ms. Schultz has captured that there, is that a reasonable, do you understand where the, the interest is to, to get that information?
Of course, and I think that's the whole premise of a mixed delivery system, where we want families to be able to choose a program in a public or a private setting and to support them in being able to access and afford that.
But not to have this get lost, because I'm, I'm a little worried that we, we keep having this conversation just even tonight. What the board is trying to understand is how many kids are sitting on the waitlist right now, four-year-olds? And they would like to do even the voucher program, but the board supervisors hasn't dedicated enough funds, so they stay on the waitlist. If we know that there are several hundred four-year-olds who say, even if you just gave me part-time pre-K for the year, it's something for my child, but there's no funding dollars, no voucher dollars for it, why? And what would that cost be? Because it might be that the board supervisors will turn around and say, in the interim, let's get another 100 kids off the waitlist and give them this voucher offering that I think Ms. Schultz is trying to drive at with this question.
But it's not, it's not just, it's not just the funding for the bodies though, because it's also space. And so the spa-, this is where the heat map comes in, is the space analysis of, okay, who's on the waiting list? What's the space analysis problem? Where do we not have space? And if they're going to stay, if they don't have access to one of our programs, if they don't qualify for one of our programs, they're still out there on the waiting list, what then? That's the gap. And so that, that, that's the cr-, the critical, you know, the spa-, the space, the, the funding, who's on the waitlist, and what it would take to, to close the gap.
So I think to the 138, Ms. Schultz, it's the reporting on the gap of what number, because it just says what, what number is on the waitlist?
The num-, the number of children.
Yeah, the number, yeah, the number of children, okay, again, we're just shorthand-ing it.
I just want to say, all right, they're children.
Gap on the number of children on the waitlist, and not just the cost for a voucher option, but what, what other, what other reasons are they still on the waitlist? Because I, I think we need to understand, if it's that they, there's only so many vouchers that get issued per year, so unless we give more funding, there's no more vouchers, I feel like there's still a lot that we don't understand of what's the barrier to getting as many of these kids off the waitlist through the mixed delivery model that you've done a great job explaining.
No, I appreciate the question, and I think some of it's semantics too, talking about a voucher system. I don't know if you're talking about the childcare subsidy program, where if families are eligible, they can elect to place their child in any legally operating early childhood program. So that is one piece of the strategy. Certainly families that are at the federal poverty level are eligible for early Head Start or Head Start in the schools, the county, or a community program. And then we do have some funding, as I've said, which is new over the past two years. The board has invested so that those families that, for whatever reason, aren't able to be served off of that waiting list or in the childcare subsidy program, that we're able to place them in community early childhood programs.
But that's exactly my point, because the question is, who is on the waiting list? Are the chi-, are the children who we don't have space for, are they on the waiting list because they're at the, I mean, you know, are they, is the majority at the federal poverty level, are they?
I understand what you're asking, and I'll make sure it's done.
I think you get it. Like, I saw you and you, like, I got it.
I know exactly what you want.
Thank you.
Excellent. So at this point, we, the work session's done. Ms. Tui, thank you again for letting this very interested board fire away with all these questions. It was helpful.
Thank you for having us and allotting all the time, we appreciate it.
Thank you, it was more than 45 minutes that you spent with the board of supervisors. We tend to take a little more time.
Yeah, we have. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We'll take a five-minute break for the next one.